Calling to order, the city council's study session for Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Christine Brown, City Clerk, please state for the record if you are present after I call your name. Mayor Matthews?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quitzland?
Present.
Councilmember Deets?
Present.
Councilmember Fantroy Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Hytopolis?
Present.
Councilmember Morawaki?
Present.
Councilmember Schneider?
Present. Thank you.
Yes, and we also have with us the City Manager Blair King and the Assistant City Attorney Andrew Tsoming, City Clerk. Next, I will read the usual land acknowledgement. Words of Chief Seattle as recorded in English after the fact, but historic event in eighteen fifty-four. Part of Seattle's remarks on this occasion is this sentence. Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hallowed by some sad or happy event in days long vanished. We begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is within the ancestral territory of the Suquamish people of Clear Salt Water. Expert fishermen, canoe builders, and basket weavers, the Suquamish live in harmony with the lands and waterways along Washington's central Salish Sea as they have for thousands of years. Here the Suquamish live and protect the land and waters of their ancestors for future generations as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of eighteen fifty-five. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Councilmember Morawaki, seconded by Councilmember Fantroy Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Are there any conflicts of interest to disclose? There are none. Our regular business can begin. We have two very substantial items of business and a third that is also important. We'll begin. City Manager, perhaps you want to set things in motion for the review of the preliminary master development plan for the project at six twenty-five Winslow Way.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, I want to give you some context of what the presentation is for you tonight. This is a review of the preliminary master development plan for the project six two five Winslow Way from Lehigh and also some consideration of exemptions for this site. So to remind the council, when you approved the development agreement with Lehigh back in May, included in that development agreement is a requirement for Lehigh that Lehigh would develop a master development plan for this project and submit it to the city council for approval within three months after the effective date of the agreement. This is not the master development plan. This is a preliminary plan to kind of start putting toes in the water for what's being thought of and considered. The master development plan is required to include a site plan that shows the layout for the project, including locations of the building, some conceptual building elevations, and in the development agreement, it's called out that the average height of the building will be approximately forty-five feet to the flat roof and forty-nine feet to the parapet. It also talks about in the development agreement, the floor error ratio will be approximately two point four six for this project, and that's contained within the development agreement. The master development plan is to show parking for the facility, talk about the community and commercial uses, and then also the master development plan will include any anticipated deviations or variances or code amendments may be required, and it calls out that this project will be looking at the height of the parapet, the maximum FAR, and the minimum parking standards. So those three things were identified in the development agreement as something that would be brought back with the master development plan. And again, what we want to do for this evening is begin to talk about the master development plan, although this is not the presentation. The schedule for this project is we are anticipating, and by the way, the master development plan will require that the city council consider the approval of the master development plan within thirty days. Within that thirty days, it would hold a public hearing or some other type of open house or other public engagement opportunity. Then the council, after thirty days, will either approve or approve the conditions or deny the master development plan. That is not a substitute for the normal review process of any project. We bet this in the development plan because he was the council then or the property owners, and so there is some parallel, but this project would still be required to go through the planning commission and meet standards and design review. Rumbauer, who is here to talk about the project, has had some informal meetings with the Chair of the Designer Review Commission to talk about the design a bit, again, in preparation for the submittal of the master development plan. The target for submittal of the project is for the major site plan to be submitted around the first of October for approval then to occur sometime in twenty twenty-six. That runs parallel with the funding applications anticipated for this project. So for better or worse, the approval process and the funding process are intertwined with each other for this project. But again, the purpose tonight was to begin the process for the master development plan. This is a preliminary review of the master development plan, and this is a preliminary discussion of the previously referred to deviations that this project would have. It pointed out that we thought that the work for the site related to the subarea plan would have been completed previously. It has not been, so we're in this, I'll call it a little bit of a twilight zone with this project. Well, introduced, the representative for Lehigh is actually representing Rumberg, the architectural firm that will walk through. And also, I believe that we'll talk, there was one previous community meeting and some of the feedback received from the previous community meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Nidhi Visakh with Rumberg Architecture Group. I'm one of the project architects on this project. This, like the City Manager mentioned, this is a preliminary MDP set. So for the proposed mixed-use development project, addressing the critical needs for affordable housing within the community of Bainbridge Island, I'm going to give you a brief overview of the project. Our proposal outlines the development of a ninety-two unit affordable housing project, thoughtfully designed to offer a diverse mix of unit types, including spacious three bedrooms, two bedrooms, one-bedroom apartments, and efficient studio units. Let me go to the project data first. The project incorporates approximately twenty-seven hundred square feet of ground-level retail space intended to activate the street front and provide valuable services to both residents and surrounding neighborhood. Below-grade parking is planned to accommodate a total of sixty-one parking stalls, ensuring efficient use of space. The design philosophy and site context, the project's site presents a unique topographical challenge, characterized by a significant slope of about twenty-three feet across the site. Our design approach has meticulously considered the natural condition with the primary intent to minimize the visual impact of the structure from the ferry terminal as the great slopes down from Winslow down to the ferry terminal. We have been mindful of the project's overall bulk and scale on the site, specifically striving to avoid appearance of a continuous four-story structure with facade modulations. Sorry. With intentional facade modulation setbacks to provide plazas, like you see in the intersection, and some significant landscape buffer along Olympic Drive. In addition, we're also proposing a step on, as the project progresses towards the ferry terminal, to reduce the bulk and scale of the project, thereby preserving the aesthetics of the and character of the streetscape. Some of the... So we also studied some of the projects on Bainbridge Island, some of the four-story projects, just to make sure we're picking up on cues from the neighboring buildings in terms of size, scale, bulk, and landscape area. These were some of the, as you see on the boards and on the presentation screen, these were some of the early design concepts that were presented at the community meeting. We received some feedback on the architectural design, the color composition at the meeting. That was all very useful, and we tried to incorporate that in this early design that you see in the MDP set. Some of the unit mixes, we're providing about thirty-eight one-bedroom units, thirteen two-bedrooms, and then about eighteen three-bedrooms. At the moment, we are proposing for livework units on the street level, and the open ones are essentially just larger studio units, just more spacious. So we're about nineteen studio units. In terms of commercial parking, we have about seven commercial stalls dedicated, residential, a total of fifty-four stalls that includes seven, I'm sorry, six visitor stalls and two car-share stalls. Moving into the deviation request, request one being the FAR, we're currently at a two-point-one, currently a two-point-one FAR below the development agreement of the two-point-four-six. And it is aligned with the future Winslow Subarea Plan update, which proposes an options of one-point-five-three and two-FAR. This just shows the site plan, and you can see how the landscape buffers off of Olympic Drive. There's some residential open space at the intersection. There's about plaza, and there's a generous ten-foot setback currently proposed along Winslow, just to provide some relief along Winslow and some landscape areas for potential play area, whatnot. This is a typical floor plan, which accommodates about twenty-seven units. I'm just going to walk through all the deviation requests, and then if you have any questions, unless you want me to stop at the request. Fine, okay. I'll just go to all of them. This is deviation request two. This is with regards to the structure height. What's allowed with the current zoning code is forty-five feet. What we're proposing is forty-five feet along the street, along any street frontage. But it's not measured from the average grade. If we did measure from the average grade, we're at sixty feet, still in line with the Winslow Subarea Plan Updates, which allows forty-five feet, fifty-five feet, and sixty-five feet, all the options of forty-five, fifty-five, and sixty-five. This section shows how we're measuring from the, this is the sixty foot measurement, but that goes all the way up to the penthouse and measured from the average grade plane. But the forty-five height limit is right about here, which is between, which is like midway through level four. And this is the dimension of, we would be within forty-five feet along any street frontage if you measured from level one. This is just showing that, like, the scale of the project would still perceive as a four-story structure, which is allowed by code. That's just showing the forty-five feet height limit, the red line. The parking requirement per code is one space for studio and one-bedroom unit and two spaces for all other primary dwelling units, which is essentially the two bedrooms and three bedrooms. But there is a note in the code that allows a fifty percent reduction up to a minimum of one space per unit. So essentially, if we are at ninety-two units, we would have to provide ninety-two stalls. But the current design with the most efficient use of the site, we're proposing a point five per unit plus six visitor stalls and two car-share stalls, and the commercial stalls are at seven. So that brings us to a total of sixty-one parking stalls.
So.
Thank you.
I guess that concludes the presentation.
Yeah.
Where we are in terms of this project, also in terms of cost at this point in time, we've referenced general numbers of fifty million, but the most recent development cost of forty-seven point two, primarily due, it's my understanding, from Lehigh to the reduced parking standards. At this point in time, the city's commitment question is, well, how much money is the city putting in? We're putting in the land. We're not selling the land. It's a long-term lease. And the city is committing three million, and the source of that money is the one-tenth of one percent of sales tax dedicated to affordable housing. What we hope to have is some discussion with the council. Again, there's been one public meeting. We got a variety of comments. This is good. We don't like this. We want to bring this to the council, get some feedback now. Put a Lehigh in a position to bring back the actual master development plan to the council, and then the council would have time to review that. Again, we're anticipating there's going to be at least a public hearing at the council on that, and then the council's option of approving it, approving it with conditions, or telling people to go back to the drawing board. We do hope we can, for Lehigh's sake, stay on the schedule where they would be putting their master, their full major application in in October, which is one of the reasons for the desire to have the standards in place for a hundred percent affordable project at that time. If they're not available at that time, they then probably would stall at least the application process. Also, in terms of parking, Lehigh was aware of Senate Bill fifty-one eighty-four, which did pass this year. It does not apply to the city of Bainbridge Island. It applies to cities of thirty thousand or more in population, but it sets a parking standard for multifamily dwelling units at point five oh parking spaces per multifamily dwelling unit. And that was the template that Lehigh was considering presenting to the council for consideration.
I'll call first on Councilmember Hytopolis and then Councilmember Deets.
Yeah, I have, I just have a lot of concerns. I'm trying to figure out how much of, how many of these concerns could have been anticipated by a council member versus they've come to be based on certain things that were beyond our control. I don't know if I was here when we approved, I think I was not here when we approved the master, I mean, sorry, the developer agreement, but that's still my fault. I wasn't aware of how much we were putting ourselves out on a limb with our expectations. Clearly, we were assuming that the, as has been said, that the severe plan would be done. And apparently, we were assuming that certain development standards would be changed in a certain way. I don't recall thinking that myself, but apparently, we've gotten ourselves in that situation. And so it puts us, as council members, in a very difficult position if we support the project, but we also support good process for the comprehensive plan. We are being asked right now, while all the planning commission is wrestling with and doing a good job at wrestling with the comprehensive plan and developing holistic policy that works not just for one project but for other projects in the long term, they have asked us how much it does in the city attorney, how much flexibility they have, and what level of certainty they have to pass now so that they have time to do a good job with development standards, so they work well together with things like step downs when we're dealing with lots of FAR at height. And now we're saying we're going to inject ourselves for one project, our project, which I think we need to be careful about. It's, you know, we're the city. We're going to get into that process. We're going to ask them to hasten some of the most critical work they're doing, I think, which is most important to them and that they've spent the most time struggling with in order to meet the deadline for the project. And I'm not, I don't by any means want to diminish the cost issues and all the issues related to what I'm saying, but that's what we're asking to do. I have concerns about the height and FAR, for what it's worth. I have concerns about the development, or sorry, the parking standards, but those are really secondary, and I do want to speak to it on a second round about whatever feedback we're giving individually, which has so much weight because the development standards are down the road. But what I do want to say is, I want to remind us that, I think we were all here, then, I'm not sure, pretty sure all of us were here, when Hager-Schreiber came to us, right before we started the comprehensive plan process, and asked us to allow them to process a comprehensive plan amendment so that they could facilitate the project that they wanted to build on Winslow Way and the timeline they wanted. And they didn't want to wait for what did in fact turn out to be, has turned out to be a long time. I actually was not a big fan of that project. I didn't want it to go forward. And I'm pointing that out because I am now saying, I'm a fan of this project, but just as I felt then and spoke out that you don't do that, you don't put the cart before the horse, you don't let a project drive your comprehensive plan. We need to go through the process. I am now saying that to be consistent and just for good process, we don't get to go to the front of the line and get in there and meddle with the planning commission, burden the planning commission with the idea that they, unelected individuals who are trying to do a good job, will have on their backs the success of this project. So I will just say, and then I'm going to be quiet, I, like I said, I'd still like to make a couple of comments for what it's worth, but that's how I feel we are procedurally set. And I don't think a process allows us to push forward in the planning commission's business with these very critical development standards for its own.
Councilmember Deets and then Councilmember Fantroy Johnson.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Just want to talk quickly first, a little bit about the financing of this project. It was very carefully penciled out, and the central part of the financing package was the low-income housing tax credits, which we need to win, if you will. We need to apply and get those. And the reason I'm bringing this up is without those tax credits, this project cannot move forward financially because the tax credits are an integral part of the financing package. And a requirement to obtain those tax credits is to have, as I understand, at least ninety units. So if there's a question, is why so many units? Now, you can say cart before the horse, but we need this project to pencil out, otherwise it won't happen. Affordable housing is right up there in our number two priority. So I'm just saying, there's reasons for what we're doing in terms of number of units in order to get the low-income housing tax credits. We didn't make the rules. This is what we've been given in order to make this happen. But I did want to bring up about the building design. Appreciate all the pictures. I guess I was under the impression, I'm interested in what my colleagues think, but I thought there would be more of a setback or step, but you would say, yeah, I guess a step, step back of the building design along Winslow Way. And I'm not seeing that in the, you know, it's just basically goes straight up. And I'm wondering, is, is from an architectural standpoint, what we're trying to avoid, this is a small town, twenty-five thousand people, not, we're not Seattle. And so a Seattle design may not be, I don't think would work too well for us, is what I'm saying, and I think others would concur. So I'd like to think about having a step back. So we don't feel like people walking by there feel like they're going through kind of a concrete, you know, canyon. So I just want to hold that out as having a step back. And yeah, it is difficult with the process. I mean, no one knew the comp plan would be where it's at today, six months ago. And so, but this is what we're faced with. I mean, this is the job we have to do in the best that we can. Again, I look at the affordable housing. We have to have the political will, colleagues, to go through this project, make some tough decisions, and I'm not saying we just rubber stamp this, but we ask the hard questions, but be mindful, what is it that we're actually trying to achieve here? Is critical housing, I saw there's one, two, and three bedrooms. The three bedrooms, I presume, are kind of designed for families, so this is a family-oriented project, not just for single people. So I'll leave it at that, and I'm interested in hearing what my colleagues say.
Councilmember Fantroy Johnson and then Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I thought that this being preliminary pretty much says that that's what we're doing here. This is not a final design. This is not final setback. It's not final anything yet. It's being brought to us for information purposes so that we can keep up with what's going on, your ideas of design. There's a couple of those I don't like, which is okay. You know, I get to not like them, you know, but I think, as my colleague said, we are trying to do something here that is kind of unique for Bainbridge Island. We're trying to build some workforce housing. We're trying to make sure that the people who work here can live here. And we're doing it according to what has been asked of us and what our policies say. We're asking for a couple of deviations, but they're still in line with the comprehensive plan, what we think the comprehensive plan is going to be. So I, you know, I think that for me, I appreciate you bringing it to us and giving us a chance to look at it. So thank you.
Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we're, you know, somewhere down the road, but not very far down the road in trying to get this thing built. So we're at maybe a point where we get, it feels like the aesthetics are of major importance. You know, the process is major importance, the what's being asked for as different from what's currently existing in the comprehensive plan. So I'm not quite sure how to respond, all told. I'll throw out, you know, I like the step-back idea that we have kind of seen a bunch of in our plan, and if we were to see an example of a step-back, I think that would be great. I also just want to point out that in the design that we're kind of being shown as, I don't know, exhibit A, it looks like there's a little bit of priority being set there as far as what's being offered. It actually looks rather nice to have a pedestrian overhang so that you've got folks walking up there who, you know, could duck under that in inclement weather or whatever. And I could also imagine, I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, put the architecture company under the gun and say, my idea is a great idea, but what if there were some kind of lighting design, you know, in that overhang that was beautiful and inspiring, basically like art? So step-backs are fine. I don't know that I'm stuck on saying, well, just because we've been asking for them all along, we need to continue asking for them. I remember when I was reviewing designs for reviewing designs for cohousing in Seattle. And the architects had brought to us what I thought was a beautiful, modern design of shed roofs. And, you know, most of my future neighbors who are helping us to, we were all pulling together to get this thing built. Just, you know, that was way too modern for them. They couldn't, they couldn't see that. And so we ended up with something with more gabled roofs and, you know, sort of pretending that, I don't know. I've always been disappointed. I mean, I didn't make a stink about it at the time because I just wanted to get the darn thing built. But I think we missed an opportunity for a very aesthetic design that just wasn't as well understood at the time as maybe it is now. I do think that this design is in line with the number of the of the number of examples being shown. So then let's set that aside for the moment. I think the other, the other really important one is process. You know, we had to look at the at what we wanted from, you know, when, when we were told that the state wanted us to consider doing affordable housing on religious property. You know, that was something that we had to sort of move on. And I think at the time we were talking about things being out of process. I think there is always a potential need for balance and the balance doesn't mean that we swing all the way to the other side and throw a process out the door. I don't think anybody's really saying that we're doing that. And there's been an awful lot of process brought up, which has kind of delayed our work on the comprehensive plan as well. And I'm not saying that that's a wrong thing, but now we're in that place where the comprehensive plan is looking further and further away. And now that's getting in the way of a very important project for the city. So I think that this being a 100% affordable housing project, it's fine for this council to make decisions, ask the planning commission to make decisions, go through the process that we can in the timeframe, but I don't think that we need to have it held up because we are out of sync with the comprehensive plan. There aren't going to be too many projects like this on Bainbridge Island that are going to be 100% affordable. And and I don't think this is going to sort of upset the apple cart of, you know, what can happen in the future. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ramara Waki.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Witsland. Like to continue the conversation and a lot of the comments that I was going to say have already been said, so I don't want to repeat it too much. But just for those following along at home, when we say set, step back, it is the concept of the first floor being at its level and then you move the, the next floor behind it a little bit. You see that at Harbor Square and other places. And I think this is a, it's been brought up. We've had several emails, including a, an email, a thoughtful email we received from one of the planning commissioners today. And I, I think it has a lot of merit to consider because by default or by design, that's essentially what we're doing with our taller buildings right now. I think our city is expecting that as a design element. And it actually helps because at the street scale, you see that one story, but you don't see the higher one behind necessarily if you're walking by. And then it gives you a sense of more street scale when you're walking down the street. So I hope we can consider that. The trade off on that, of course, is you may lose units. You, and we want to get the maximum amount of units to allow those who we want to be able to live here to have that opportunity. So it's all this balancing of scale and, and how we do that. One thing that we, I would like to have considered or at least discussed upon here is what is the area meeting income target we're trying to hit? I mean, we're at the 60% area many, in 60% area meeting income. But there are those who are just at that point, a little bit higher, and they may be some of the critical first people who should provide our community that we may want to hit. So I, I realize that when you change that formula, you lose perhaps opportunities of different grants. Just, there's a lot of things moving. That's, I think, what I, I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues here. There's a lot of moving parts. But on process, whatever we do, I hope that we will bring it forward at a meeting where there is at least opportunity for the public to respond or to weigh in. They can't do that at this meeting. This is our meeting to talk and study. But when we do move this forward, let's make sure it's at a point where public comment is allowed because I think a lot of people are interested in how this process goes forward. And finally, I've been an advocate for this for 30 years on this island. And this is a very exciting opportunity we have as a city to a major impactful building that could actually have some of the people who make the city work actually live here. And I'm not talking about the city of Bainbridge. I'm talking about our whole community, the people who service food and the people who work at our groceries and are doing help, providing services and all the rest. They're the people who make our city run. And so I want to make sure that this project works and succeeds. We've got a lot of moving parts. Let's try to keep them focused in the same direction.
Mayor Matthews next.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. And thank you so much for the presentation. I'm really encouraged by the progress and seeing, seeing it happen. I am, we did receive an email from the vice, the vice chair of the planning commission. And it made me think about a few things within the process. And so I just had a couple of questions about that. If we are asking planning commission to make changes in F A R and building heights specifically for this project. And this is not to take their, I don't want to use the word power, but their, their work away. But why, why would we send this to just this topic to them to rubber stamp? Why isn't it something that, in a way, because that's what it feels like, why wouldn't this be something that we could just say, this is a change that council is making for the project? That was my one question. And then in response to some of the, there was something in there about the D, our design review board not meeting with the, or being part of the process. And so I just wanted to point out that the chair had a chance to review the plans. And I, I think that is an open conversation or open door. So that's it.
I see Councilwoman Hytopolis blight on, I haven't spoken yet. So I want to thank you for the presentation and we're, we're tentatively making our way into the range of questions and concerns that surround this is this is a bold move. I think the city manager got us moving in this direction and it's, it's hard to maintain the momentum, but I think momentum is important in this process. And being clear and making choices, making, making decisions as a group is important. I do think questions about the the, the frontage on Winslow Way. I'm struck by how different the, the, the whole project looks from Olympic Drive. The south, the south elevation, the setback into the property, the, the variation in you know, the plaza, that, that's not just ingenious, that's functionally elegant and very, very successful. And I would like the, the frontage on Winslow Way to be equally cool and, and charming, if that can be managed somehow. I think it's being managed in the variation in the frontage. It's not a straight wall. It's, it's, it's punctuated by the windows and, and that's, that's very successful. The straight up with no, no step back. There, there are practical reasons for maximizing the floor area. I, I do understand that. It's, it's, that's, it's a hard trade off, I think. And maybe we need to just worry a little more about what our options are in terms of apartment size and we do have an obligation to maintain the number of units and achieve something there. We're always going to be working within constraints of various kinds, including financial considerations and the practicalities of the building process and, and the sort of the engineer's approach to design. So it's, I'm, I'm standing way outside of an architect, architectural practice, but I do appreciate the the difficulties of making the best decision and the best, best accommodation of things. I believe that having, having this specific project at this time in our planning for Winslow and our comprehensive plan process, I think it's, it's, it's accidental. It's not what we planned for, not what we expected. But I'm not troubled by the I, I, I don't see inappropriateness in a process. Because I've followed every one of the planning commission considerate discussions of the details of planning for Winslow and increasing density, but up to, up to a certain point, increasing it here and not there and so on, so forth. The more they have in the way of specific building types in mind and, and, and specific projects. I do think it's, it's an aid to the process of, you know, the request for a deviation, that's a deviation from what we recognize as an outmoded, outdated set of constraints that we should have changed 10 years ago. Now we're, now we're under the right kind of pressure to make the changes with a vision for a future that, that is different from our, our past, especially with regard to the amount of housing that we accommodate in Winslow and the economic considerations of, of affordability and planning for diversity, all of that. So I do think this is coming not as a gift, but as a very good problem to solve. That's the way I approach it. We can, we can go back and forth as to, you know, what's our next step, I guess. We haven't finished this discussion yet, so I'll, I'll pause at that point. Councilmember Hytopolis, I know you wanted to say some more.
A couple more things. For one thing, I think we need clarification as to whether we're asking the, the planning, and I do have more to say after this clarification, but whether we're asking the planning commission to draft code specifically for this parcel, or we're asking the planning commission to complete the code for this zone? And, and I guess, and also make a change to the zoning, which zone this parcel is in, since it's currently zoned for Central Core.
It's my understanding is that those decisions will be left to the planning commission. We're asking the council if they would want to direct me to provide information to the planning commission for how would you treat 100, and I think it is, we're trying to make the distinction between 100% affordable project. Staff could have drafted an ordinance, but we didn't do that at this point in time because we think that would be premature. So there are a variety of different ways and, and we're trying to get that sweet spot between saying, in order for this to advance on a schedule where the applicant could actually walk in on October the first and lay down an application. What will the conditions be on October 1st? And would they be ready to accept this application on October 1st? Here's some preliminary information that we need. Then if we come back with a master development plan, the master development plan shows this, then there would be some more of a squeeze. Right now, this site is, I understand, it currently is in the core zoning district. The discussion I understand is that this geographic area would be included in the ferry landing district. And then the standards would be set at the ferry landing district. There is, there could be a draft ordinance that could be worked on with feedback from the planning commission, depending upon what, how they wanted to treat that. So that's my understanding. If I could to, but some, well, maybe that, because there are some, I do want to ask the council's opinion on a couple of trade offs that I'd want to provide back to Lehigh.
So if I could just finish. So to me, if we're at all talking about, I think that what we know we're talking about is drafting the code for affordable, for affordable housing, 100% affordable housing projects in the ferry district. We are not going to be talking about drafting a code for this parcel. So again, going back to the fact that this is not, I just want the full council to understand, this isn't a little of a deviation from our current code. That's not legal. We can't do that. This isn't just about comprehensive planning. This is about law. It's about development code now. This project cannot be built today under that code. We may wind up with these changes to our code. That's where we're going in the long run, but we don't know for sure what that looks like. And we are hastening that for that entire zone. A couple of other things, the unit number, I, I wasn't aware that we were actually stuck with 92 units, no matter what. Are we stuck with that? I didn't think so. So.
So that, that goes to another question. There is a minimum number we need for the low income housing tax credit. But on the other hand, there is a, a mix of units. If the council likes its mix of units, in other words, three bedrooms, the number of three bedrooms could be reduced and you would have more units with less square foot. So that becomes part of what you want to accomplish with this type of project. There was a proposal that we, wasn't selected for people that were proposing basically primarily all one bedroom complex. What staff feedback to the app has been is we want a mix of units to complete, to accommodate the workforce. But that is direction that we could be taking from the council in terms of what do you feel about the mix of, of units?
So if I could just continue real quickly here. So I, again, I'm not really 100% sure if it's 92 is the number, but along the lines of the city manager said, I have been long concerned that we have too many two bedrooms and three bedrooms for this location who we've said we're trying to house. And if you, and that concern, we're not going to be filling it with those people. So I would definitely be supportive of having a lot more one bedrooms and, and studios. Going to that question of parking, which relates to this as well, the idea that we're going to have three bedroom homes of families with, you know, one half, what is it, one half parking space per unit? That's concerning as well for people who are living in studios versus one bedrooms and living a different lifestyle. But really importantly, and this has bothered me through this entire process in talking about severely reducing the parking, is that we're talking to people who are going to be at 60% AMI. They are not walking down the street to shop at T and C. I would argue they're not going to really be able to afford reasonably to shop at our Safeway. People need cars to get to groceries and other supplies that they're going to need. I'm not, I'm not saying what the outcome is, like, I'm not going to make a recommendation. I'm not a developer as to what the number of parking should be. But I do hope that our developer understands that our transit looks absolutely nothing like Seattle. You don't just pop on the bus that comes by every 15 minutes and maybe sometimes every 30 minutes. And so the idea that someone's going to be living in this place down near the ferry and they're going to be able to get to affordable groceries alone. Those are the kind of things I think we actually have to think about. And I cannot imagine there being a half spot per, per unit for that purpose. For the design, I will not be able to vote for something that does not step back from Winslow Way, period. Across the street with the, of existing housing that exists that at the time when it came in was quite a surprise to the community. It steps back after, I think it's one high first floor. So either that or two, two stories, but I think it's one high first floor. That would be consistent for this and I, I wouldn't be able to vote for that. And I don't think that our community will. And I think, and they won't vote for it, they won't support it. And I think one thing that's worth saying, I'm sorry, I'm talking fast, but I feel, I know I'm in the minority and I want to get my points out. You know, there's been a bunch of talk about tentatively making our way, preliminary feedback, and I think we need a little bit of a reality check because we're getting really far into this. So this is the time to speak out, I'm sure, about anything significant. Now, maybe you all are fine with 60 foot average heights, et cetera. You're fine with whatever, but at some point they are not going to be able to reasonably make changes. So this is really not preliminary. This may not be the final, but we're pretty deep in this. So I just want to point that out. And then the last thing that I've really been wanting to talk about, waiting for this meeting to come, is that since the development agreement was adopted and I, it wasn't at that meeting, it has concerned me about the fact that there is no floor to affordability on this project. And that's been brought to our attention a few times by someone in the community who is a builder of affordable housing, the concern that legally, if you look at the contract, there is absolutely nothing keeping Lehigh from at some point in the near term or the long term, deciding to make this a project for a much lower level of affordability. And the reason this matters, because all we have is a cap. And the reason this matters, because all we have is a cap, all we have is, I think it's an average AMI of 60% or something along those lines. There is no minimum average of. And what we've been warned about is that because because, you know, you're going to get a lot more pools of financing and support for lower AMI, we don't want to lose control of who we're serving here. Now, we have to house people of every AMI, and we want to do anything we can to do that. But we have sold this project as serving a certain level of people, a certain type that that are our workers in in Winslow who work in restaurants, hopefully, who we've been not not able to, restaurateurs have not been able to staff, et cetera. Hopefully, I don't know, medical aides, we don't know for sure. It's going to be too low in price already for any of our teachers, except maybe the babyest teacher. So it will matter if this project went down to an average of 50% or 40% AMI. So I would like the council to agree that we are going to establish between either now or between now and the time that we are endorsing the final project a floor to make sure that we are staying within the affordability that we have promised the community and that we are intending to provide.
Councilmember Fantroy Johnson and then Mayor Matthews, and I have something to say as well.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You know, we can keep picking at this. And if if, you know, we can just keep saying that, you know, we're for this, it's on our board, we want this to happen. But every time affordable housing comes up on this dais, there is always someone who says, I would vote for this, but and then they name 100 reasons, and they all sound plausible. When the bottom line is, do we want to do this or not? Instead of finding 100 reasons why we can't, let's try to find the solutions to some of the issues that are being stated, which I don't believe they're issues. My whole point is, you you know, how do we know that the people who live here, you know, you're putting projections on people that, oh, now they can't even shop shop at TNC? I see people shopping at TNC all the time with EBT cards and everything else. People shop where they want to shop. You know, if we quit trying to be special and start being inviting, that that would go a long way. It it it's really disheartening that every time, I mean, each and every time affordable housing comes up, there's always someone who has 99 reasons why we can't do it. It's impossible. And then we have other people who are developers telling you things, why don't they develop some affordable housing? I don't see them throwing their name in the hat. But they got reasons why we're going to get, oh, it's going to be bad for us. You know, everybody's going to sell everything at at top notch price once they get it in there. It is really disheartening to hear that all the time.
Mayor Matthews now.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I had to say something about the I I just feel like the way we speak about this project and the way we speak about the lovely potential folks who are going to fill that and live there for us is so important to how the community accepts this project and accepts people. And so when we other people and say that they're not even people that we think are going to, we're trying to send them to Bremerton or wherever else we are envisioning them shopping. I mean, that's one of the most offensive things I've heard in so long. Our name, our community is for the people that we are, we are building this for people to live and participate and be able to shop and enjoy and go to school in our community. What are we going to say that they aren't the the level to go to the schools either? This is something that, yeah, I I it's just, I just felt I had to say something with that. It just felt really off and wrong to say that about these potential folks. I am lucky to work in that area. I work right in the in the bottom of Harbor Square, so I'm there all the time. And I see the traffic and the what's going on in the community and Harbor Square, if you look at it, it's on the street level, it's all one level. So it's, we are on the bottom floor and there's, I think, a one level condo above us and then to the left are townhouses. So it's a little bit different, but the same thing could sort of apply, but you have to realize that it's going up a hill. So you're going to see it. I think the way the eye goes is the setback might not be as visually pleasing at what folks are thinking, but it would be good to, you know, see the see the specs. But yeah, just, this is a project that I feel like when people hear low income or affordable housing, it comes with stereotypes and things that they might be envisioning, you know, sheets hanging out the window and whatever, cars, you know, with messed up cars with one tire hanging off. And so the more we can do to reassure folks that that is not the case or and not add fantasies to the equation, the better.
Point of order, Chair. I would hope that we would agree that we each have our own opinions or points of view, but this is not the place to challenge others' points of views or or statements. I think that's not necessarily appropriate or moving the discussion forward. I think we should just try to stick to the issue and and do this in good faith for all of us.
We will come to a point where we should consider the recommended motion. But a little bit more consideration. I I feel it's important to try to line up the decisions we have to make and the to bring concerns to a specific moment in a process. Let's imagine success to start with. And kind of work back from that vision of success. And and safeguard make the best choice on the various things that have to be further discussed and decided upon. So I do think we need the planning commission's perspective. And they they with help of our consultant, Joe Tovar, they will be able to fit this in to the right place in in the process they're involved in right now. I don't think they they need to put things aside to handle this and let it derail the work that is going forward, but between planning staff and planning commissioners, they will find a way to play their part in this process. And I think that participation by the design review board on an informal basis, there's no reason why members of the design review board can't come to a planning commission meeting to contribute to problem solving and identifying the choices that that are still open for us. So I'm ready to move that we consider, I move that we forward a request for revised development regulations to the planning commission for development of an ordinance for a city council consideration. This puts no deadline on that work, but it moves things along. There will be a second for that, okay? Let's speak to the motion and I'll call for the question at a certain point.
I'm not going to speak further to the motion. I'm going to speak to the of comments that were made about my comments. I am barely sitting on this dais at the moment. I'm I'm just floored. And I guess I would respond that 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 the insensitivity or lack of understanding of what people can afford and what they're experiencing, including live on Bainbridge right now at 60% AMI or 40% of AMI and unable to buy groceries at a reasonable price. To say that my sensitivity to that is an insensitivity to people and exclusion of them from our very overpriced grocery stores is really offensive. And again, why don't you go around on the island, try to talk to people who are in the lower strata of the of the economy on this island, who are barely staying on this island? They do not shop at TNC. They cannot shop at TNC. I would love for them to shop TNC. So anyway, I just, I just think it's really horrifying that we can't have honest conversations about real, serious policy issues without that sort of condemnation.
Councilmember Baraki and also Councilor Schneider, you have lights on.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And that was kind of like the point of order I was trying to express. If we do move this forward again, I just want to stress again, I really believe we have to have an opportunity for the public to weigh in. We're talking amongst ourselves here a lot, and we're trying to find our way, but the community does have to be involved. Anything that we move forward to any moment, unlike like we did with the art thing, we didn't even allow the public to weigh in, we just voted on the day and, you know, that was that was appropriate, I think. So we shouldn't read, we shouldn't repeat that because I heard from people said, you were right, we, I wanted to say something, but you already moved forward the proposal you wanted to do. I said, well, I did not. I wasn't one of those who voted for it. So let's do that. Let's let's really pledge as a as a council that we're going to try to make sure that our community is heard and other voices are heard. So if we do move this forward, it's not going to be a recommendation directly. It'll be something that we will then discuss at a future meeting, allowing public comment, and then perhaps we can make a decision.
Councilwoman Schneider.
So I'm going to be expressing I I'm going to say it's not an opinion, it's another view of facts, which is that it takes a fair amount of family income to own a car. And what I'm going to propose at some point in all of this is that when we get around to deciding who gets the parking spaces, assuming that we offer them at, you know, 0.5, we should be charging those units that are going to get a car, we should be charging them because the folks who are choosing not to have a car should not be subsidizing those who do have a car. And we can talk about alternatives, we can talk about car sharing, we can talk about transit, and we can talk about new needs that will need to be met when this project is built. So I'm not saying that we have what it takes for a family to get around without a car. I do know that by choice, I make a lot of awkward decisions on how to get around without a car because we're a one car family and our car is not on Bainbridge Island most of the time these days. So I am a little bit aware, and I'm not trying to create comparisons, but it's there. So choices will have to be made. I think it's appropriate for us to have discussions about affordability and the choices that people make with given amounts of affordability, and we should be asking people who have are making those affordability choices. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, I just wanted to provide some options or clarifications for the council to to think about this. Again, pursuant to our agreement, Lehigh has till August to provide their master development plan, but that date could be extended out of August next month. That's why they're here now, because before they do any more work, they want to see what the attitude of the council is. And previous proposals, even before Lehigh was selected as a developer, the issue of FAR was discussed with the council. There's a general feeling the council looked at that, and the idea of the parking standards came from this dais that the council would be open to individuals, council members that suggested the council has to take action. What we could do is a couple of things to follow. Again, we're behind where we thought the planning commission would be, and that's where we have this Twilight Zone that we're operating in. We could, Lehigh has three years to get financing and then the development agreement expires. We could push this back. Right now, we're, we hope if everything goes well, we'll complete construction and open up this facility in spring of '29. If we push it back a year, which we could, and wait till we actually have the standards, so we would be having this discussion and Lehigh could walk in and present their plans, then that that might take another year, and then we could open this up in spring of 2030. That would be one of the things to do. We could extend the due date for the master development plan several months, see what kind of progress the planning commission makes, what preliminary decisions might be recommended to the council. We could do that, but that also probably would mean that we're extending the deadline back to spring of 2030. And I'm not trying to present this in a negative, just giving you what the options will be. And I'll I'll just say this, I I've done in my career probably a dozen projects at this scale, and it is difficult to do 100% affordable project at this scale, and you balance a lot of competing needs on the head of a needle. And that that's what's going on here. It's just makes, it's just made a little bit more difficult because there's been an ongoing rolling discussion that probably developed standards might be changed. It even came out in the Econ Northwest proposals for affordable housing to change the standards. The standards that we're looking at are pretty consistent with the Housing Action Plan, the Econ Northwest did as well. So that that isn't to say that Lehigh could come up with a project, probably a different composition of units within the height, but that parking is something that a sense of where we're going to go with that and a sense of FAR is something that I think that we need now or we should delay.
I'd like to move to a vote with an understanding that this doesn't move the discussion entirely away from the city council. It simply introduces it on the agenda of the planning commission. And communication between our two bodies is something that needs to can improve, will, I hope will improve. Working together on a fairly wide ranging conversation that includes members of our community, which we don't have yet. So I'm going to call the question on this motion and
Repeat, please.
Yes. Moving to forward a request for revised development regulations to the planning commission for development of an ordinance for city council consideration. And the second came from Councilmember Fantroy Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Two. Okay. The motion is five to two in favor. Thank you very much.
So what, yes, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, what we'd expect then is to have then a master development plan presented to the council in August. What that does requires that there be, there's a selection of options for the council. But during the 30 day period that the council has, is that an open house, a public hearing or another type of engagement opportunity? What I'm anticipating is that we would go ahead and schedule a public hearing then. And then the council has 30 days to approve or prove conditions or develop, which is not the same again as this project has to go through the plan and approval process and design review process. Just you as the property owners then are weighing in in terms of the master development plan. And it also is our intention, we have heard the concern about floor. Jim Haney has been been in contact with the general counsel for Lehigh and that I'm expecting that language to come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and your patience with us. Thank you. Our second item is to review the state legislation impacting solid waste and the status of solid waste initiatives on Bainbridge Island.
Well, we change out our set decorations. Adam Nebrzal, and this is a a topic that we've wanted to bring to the council in a study session. We want to talk about state legislation, of restate legislation, how it will impact Bainbridge Island. We want to talk about the Kitsap Colony Solid Waste and the Heather's management plan that's being worked on. And then we want to talk about the update to our climate action and comp plan goals related to waste. There's no action for the council other than receiving the information, and we do have an interesting sidebar report on the council on organic composting appliances and and something recommendation that we're not recommending endorsement on, but I think an interesting experiment that the Climate Change Advisory Committee went through. that the Climate Change Advisory Committee went through.
Thank you, City Manager. Yep. Name is Adam Nebensall, management analyst. And as the City Manager mentioned, just could be talking about solid waste management on Bainbridge Island this evening. So as per normal, City Manager kind of knocked out what the, the discussion is for this evening of statewide legislation, kind of briefly talking about Kitsap County, what the solid waste system is like for Bainbridge Island, as well as a brief introduction of the hazardous management plan on Bainbridge. And then finally, talking about the city Bainbridge Island solid waste goals and then any next steps. So first with the statewide legislation. So the first one that we wanted to highlight this evening was the organics management law. This is a law that has been passing two forms, the first one in 2022, which was HB 1799. And then the second was an updated version with increased language in 2024. The goal of this law is to mainly divert organic materials away from the landfills through multiple different ways, including food rescue, increase in organics management facilities, and other ways of preventing just even from going in the landfill in the first place. The main target is the goal, the goal is to reduce organic material in a landfill by 75% by 2030. There are three main policies that we want to highlight from this bill that really affect the city of Bainbridge Island. First is organics recycling collection, also known as ORCA, and those requirements. The second are model ordinances that the Department of Ecology has been working on. And then third are the compost procurement ordinances, also known as CPOs. So ORCA requirements are, were triggered for Bainbridge Island because we, the, are known as a population of over 25,000. So then we are required to meet these requirements. So these requirements state that by 2027, in April, cities and counties with local solid waste plans must make a year-round organist collection services available to residential customers except multifamily residences. And then non-residential customers that create more than 0.25 cubic yards of organic waste per week. Cities and counties that have already had that collection service in place prior to January 1st, 2024 are not required to provide year-round service, but they need to do it at least 26 times per year. And then by April 30th, April 2030, apologies, all customers in these cities and counties except multifamily residences once again, must receive organic and food waste collection service. The city will need to, moving on, on that one. So for the mall ordinances, the goal here is to support local governments to divert organic materials from the landfill. The Department of Ecology released these mall ordinances in the beginning of 2025 for, for public feedback and for cities and counties to provide these model mechanisms for commercial solid waste collection and disposal. These were designed to establish a financial disincentive or other disincentives for organic waste generation and disposal in landfills. Most of these ordinances are focused on special events, single-family mandatory organist collection, as well as designing multifamily buildings to account for organics collection. Local governments do not have to adopt these model ordinances. However, those that do and who do adopt these model ordinances may be able to avoid CPOs. So that would be a major step in passing those and in reducing the time in needed for that. The third one is the compost procurement ordinances. This is something that the city has actually achieved already. So this was a tool for cities, towns to look for opportunities to buy compost products and use it in their projects. As I just mentioned, we passed it in 2023, and we were required to start submitting reports, which we met the March deadline for 2025 on data from 2024. The second one is the Recycling Reform Act. This was something that had a lot of buzz coming into the legislative agenda for 2025. I apologize that the slide in the, in the system to EPR system is a little bit small, but the goal here is to increase recycling rates and reduce waste by holding producers financially responsible for, financial and operationally responsible for the life cycle of these products. The extended producer responsibility establishes a statewide program regarding consumer packaging and paper products specifically. Producers will be required to form these organizations that pay annual registration fees, fund and implement programs, and they must be formed by 2025 and 2026 with plans submitted by 2028 with the full expectation of implementation by 2030. This slide on here shows the current system and what the EPR system, this is data that has been produced by the Department of Ecology. We don't have much further information at this point. As I mentioned, this was just passed a few months ago by the legislature. But the Department of Ecology has already begun rulemaking, and we do expect funding opportunities to open up because of this law in the coming years. I do want to thank Bainbridge's disposal and Heather Church. She sent the city council some more background information on the new Recycling Reform Act. And I encourage you all to look at it if you haven't already. Next is the Kitsap County Solid and Hazardous Waste Management Plan. So this is a guiding document that sets the goals, recommendations, and strategies for sustainable management of solid and hazardous wastes in the county. And the city Bainbridge Island and all other Kitsap jurisdictions have an inter-local agreement or ILA with Kitsap County, recognizing it as the lead planning agency for this plan. So this slide is to provide you with additional information on where our solid waste goals. I do want to note that the red line is what happens to our landfill waste. So basically is the waste hauler picks up the solid waste from outside our trash cans, trash bins, and it gets taken to the Olympic View Transportation in Bremerton. At that point, it's compacted on site, put into large container cars, and shipped via railroad all the way down to Arlington, Oregon, to the Columbia Ridge landfill. From there, it is placed into the landfill, and it will stay there until the landfill is filled up, and then it will be covered over. Another, moving from solid waste to recycling. So speaking with our waste hauler directly, we learned that when your recycling gets picked off from the waste hauler, it travels 65 miles or three and a half hours straight down to JMK Fibers in Tacoma. From there, machines, the recyclers are dumped out, and machines and workers sort the recyclable into similar materials. They then bale them together and sell the bales to manufacturers. This is where the contamination matters, and it also depends on type of recycling. So a whole bin, when you say recycling, it can be difficult because depending on the type of material means the type of amount that is contaminated. So contamination can change between maybe a yogurt tub to even a soda bottle. So it really depends on the type of material, it depends on the contamination rate. So at this time Bainbridge Island, we don't know what our contamination rate is for the things that are being picked up from our recycling. And therefore, we're unsure what level of recycling is actually being diverted and not ending up in the landfill at this point. But going back to the process, domestic and international buyers then look at the bales that are produced at JMK Fibers and then sent. And then if buyers will buy, obviously, on a higher price, those bales of recycling that are not as contaminated. And then finally, our organic system, residential compostables that are picked up on Bainbridge Island are collected on the curbside and then taken directly to North Mason Fiber and Belfair. The contamination rate, we, as stated previously to you in the city council, it's approximately a maximum of 5% before it's transferred to the landfill. So that's a really low contamination rate before composting goes in to the landfill. So additionally, the availability of organics in the system is also very limited to what the county is able to do. I've actually had discussions with members of the Department of Ecology saying like, hey, if the city was interested in increasing the amount of things that can be accepted, what capacity is there? And we were told that we're limited to really what the county is able to do and what facilities are able to in the region. So if the county increases what can be accepted, we can increase more diversion. Recently, as part of the Waste Recycling Education Grant that we recently closed out, we did do another estimate of the compost bins along Winslow Way to gain estimation what the compost contamination rates were. Those were at 35%. So a lot of that stuff that is going in the compost, and we are trying to continually increase our education and figure out what are the best ways. And we found success with postcards mailing directly to residents on Bainbridge Island. However, we still need to really get at visitors on Bainbridge Island and figure out ways that we can increase education on there to help decrease contamination into the compost bins. This slide, I don't really want to get into because it's pretty busy, but what I really want to just highlight here is that the Department of Ecology requires local governments to develop a plan to manage solid waste. And Kitsap County Board of Health in this situation sets the regulations, and the sustainable and solid and hazardous waste management plan sets the standards requirement and strategies. And then the city of Bainbridge Island follows the inter-local agreement and implements that solid waste or follows the solid waste hazardous management plan. That's a lot. And so I'm not going to get into that, but this basically, what this slide shows is that where level of requirements are for each agency and jurisdiction of government. So finally, I just want to highlight on the current city of waste solid goals. A lot of what you see in these next few slides are based on the Climate Action Plan. But I do want to note that this is, that solid waste and the waste goals of Bainbridge Island are not just in the Climate Action Plan, they're also in the comprehensive plan. So it's really sprinkled throughout a lot of the plans that we have on Bainbridge Island. And also, these goals mentioned in the Climate Action Plan, these three here, reduce island residential, commercial, industrial waste, increase diversion of waste in the landfill, and optimize collection and disposal systems. These are only the ones that are most focused on solid waste on Bainbridge Island. There are ones that are germane to the topic, but these are ones that we just want to highlight that are really specific to solid waste. There are these strategies that I've also mentioned that are right below here. And then there are actions we need within each strategy. There are approximately 85 strategies, 85 actions, if I recall what Laura Reeser, our climate adaptation manager, told me. And I could be here all night, probably talking about each action and what we were trying to do to accomplish those. But I think what we just want to highlight here is there are a lot of goals, and we are restricted in growth of collection due to county availability. Next, I just want to highlight what the targets were in the Climate Action Plan. Mind you, that this is with the 2020 baseline when the Climate Action Plan was first released. So by 2021, the city will establish policies to substantially reduce the use of single-use disposable food service ware by island businesses. By 2023, regular commercial compost services will be established. By 2025, the city will develop a requirement for the diversion of all food waste from the landfill. And then by 2030, this Bainbridge Island has a closeless system for its green and agile cultural waste so that they are reused on the island to the maximal extent possible. To date, we can talk about what actions we have taken. So that includes in 2023, we wrapped up our study through the company Tetra Tech. This highlighted and got a better understanding of solid waste systems on Bainbridge Island, some of which we've highlighted here this evening. The city council passed the disposable to go where container ordinance back in 2021, and which started taking more full effect in 2023 and 2024. We had the compost procurement ordinance and reporting, which I mentioned. Waste Collection and Recycling Education Grant, which I mentioned, will be closed by the end of June. And then the Climate Change Advisory Committee's recommendation on the Food Cyclr, which are attached to this event, but just to give you a quick ground, as Waste Recycling Grant, was to host an open, to educate residences on ways that they can become zero waste. And out to different technology companies, being Food Cyclr, my own house. We also reached out to other companies, including Mill, which is another company, a product. Food Cyclr offered and said, hey, we have this off the bat, then maybe single-family residences, and that maybe the city shouldn't be investing all into one organization or one company like Food Cyclr, but really promoting all of these types of companies that create products like these. So finally, the next steps, so these are just some considerations to meet requirements and strengthen the solid waste system on Bainbridge Island. As the city, as city staff were going to prepare this presentation for you, we just came to some conclusions and some possible recommendations for you to consider moving forward. So for solid waste, we do recommend that the city council consider performing a solid waste characterization study to further understand what percent of contamination is really ending up in our landfill and recycling and composting. We do recommend finalizing a franchise agreement with a waste hauler. For recycling, we do recommend increasing education and other methods to increase the diversion rate, reduce the contamination rate, and increase types of products that can be recycled. For organics management, we recommend considering the adoption of the Department of Ecology's model ordinances and possibly even consider ordinances to support composting at multifamily residences, not just single-family. And then also recommending that the city council ensure compliance to meet the 2030 deadline for all residences at minimum, excluding multifamily residences, to receive organic food collection service. And then finally, for the city goals, we really recommend consider updating waste goals, targets, and strategies in the Climate Action Plan as well as the comprehensive plan. That concludes my presentation. I look forward to your discussion, and we will be bringing back any info on these various topics in the future.
Thank you, Adam.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah.
Just before we turn over questions. So we know the council is, this council particularly is very interested in solid waste, showing your interest in solid waste issues. Mr. Nebensall has been our point of contact with the Kitsap County Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And with the recent organics laws, there are some rulemaking that is in place. And one that we have heard maybe, and it's not been finalized, but it again, it may affect our relationship either with other cities within the county in terms of a pool or with our hauler. And I just wanted Mr. Nebensall to tell us what information we have.
So this is not something that's been finalized yet, but this is something I spoke with Caitlin Newman, who is one of the program coordinators at the Kitsap County. So what she stated to me most recently on, I think it was yesterday, actually, was that with the updated rulemaking to meet this 2030 requirement, the city may need to either have a franchise agreement with a waste hauler or we might have to create a collection district. This would be similar to another public utility district. And only one county in all of Washington State actually currently has a collection district, and that's in Watcom County and for Point Roberts specifically in that area. And it's such a small area, and even from what I've heard, things have may not always gone the most smoothly in that situation. So it might be something that it may be coming in rulemaking in the future. We do know that we are a unique island in that situation, and so we would have to follow what the county and Department of Ecology to figure out more information on that.
Councilor Dietz.
Great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Adam. That's a great presentation. You know, we shouldn't treat garbage like garbage because it's, it's, it's very important for us. I was taken aback, the information that so much of what we think is a community, when we think is being recycled, is actually going into the landfill. And I think that that's part of our, I think the education that we need to have as a community, just because it's going in the recycle bin doesn't mean that's what's actually going to happen, and it sounds like that is the case. So we need to be alerted to that fact because going to landfill goes all the way to central Oregon, right? I would like, in due course, know more about the solid waste collection district, what that entails, what that would require of us. And is there some way that could be avoided? Because it sounds like it's something, I get the impression that's something we'd rather not do. And next is the state's new recycling law that was just signed by the governor in, in May, I believe, SB 5284. That basically totally changes how recycling is done. Where presently, the cost is on, say, the business owner and therefore on the consumer. This law actually requires the manufacturer, the, the, who creates the waste itself, the very first product, they pay into a fund to pay for recycling. So that totally changes the landscape for recycling. And so I know we have a discussion scheduled August 12th. We're going to, I saw we're scheduled to discuss how our current waste reduction ordinance meshes with this new state law. Because obviously, when we create, pass that, our, our own ordinance, we had no idea the state law was going to be coming through. So that's a future discussion I look forward to. And last, I got a field trip a couple of years ago to Vancouver, BC, to look at how they do waste. And they are so far along than what we are. And it made me think that since And they are so far along than what we are. And it made me think that since, Adam, you mentioned this J M K fibers in Tacoma. You know, it may be worth something for us to think about doing a field trip collectively to go down there and see how that operates. That I think that would be valuable. So thank you, Adam, for this presentation. It was very informative.
Councilmember Marawaki and then Councilmember Hytopolis.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Witsland. And again, a great presentation. And you do a lot of stuff here, Adam. So I appreciate all of your effort and putting all these PowerPoints together and stuff. One, one comment, I wish the state would stop screwing around with acronyms. I mean, we've finally got this four-county regional transit system, transit pass called ORCA. It's one regional card for all. And we finally got that down. And now they come up with organic recycling collection. I don't know why I have to do this. But there's an important date in your PowerPoint that is really the one that you have to, and it's not April Fool's Day, but it says April first, twenty seventeen, that cities and counties must have the year on plan. So that's something we must do. We're required to do that, but we're not the provider of it. We don't provide the service. This is probably one of the reasons why we want to have a licensing agreement with someone to make sure that we can comply with state law. And I'm just curious if that doesn't happen and if we don't have a kind of agreement. How do we as a city comply with the mandate from the state when we as a city don't provide that service but have it contracted with a private company or some other source? And how is that enforceable? And who has the liability of missing or meeting those requirements? That's an important thing to think about. And then on the Recycling Reform Act, it was Senate Bill fifty-two eighty-four. I'd like a little discussion on that. I found this really fascinating, Extended Producer Responsibility Program, which means that producers of this waste, the paper products and all the rest, they have to pay these fees and such. I want to see how that function works. How did, how did, I can see the wonderful end games, you know, increasing it from sixty-two percent, seventy-five percent, et cetera. I just want to know if that can really be something that can be met. And then finally, I think it's, I'm glad you had the chart reminding people that we ship this stuff by rail, you know, halfway across our state down to Oregon to take care of our waste. So we really have got to get a handle on that. And we talk about our climate action plans. And then we do all our work here to try to reduce our carbon load. And then we load up our garbage to put on a train, putting out carbon. So all that work we did to reduce carbon, did we really do a net? Did we really increase the sustainability and viability of our atmosphere and the rest? So a lot of, a lot of conflicting things that we have to deal with in terms of taking care of waste. Thanks much.
Councilor Hytopolis.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what the connections between, and why are we reviewing the waste ordinance? If I'm not hearing anything about compostable waste, I'm hearing about recyclable waste. Is, were there changes with regards to, you know, bioplastics or home compostable or anything related to our ordinance?
So through the chair and Mr. Neversall is, will answer that better, but he had a brief slide up there on fifty-two eighty-four. And one of the things that we hope to accomplish tonight maybe was to address some of these questions in terms of the relationship to see if we could satisfy some of the questions regard to disposal, food service ware and waste reduction ordinance. But we have a slide up here explaining fifty-two eighty-four.
The answer I can give right now is I'm not sure. I know if you look to other states that have implemented the extended producer responsibility, that includes states like Oregon, states like Minnesota, those more really affect those things like uh milk jug containers and dairy tubs and things that go in the recycling. However, the word recycling can get used for composting at times, which I think can get confusing. So I do hesitate to give a formal answer with that. My leniency is that it will be towards those, those, those number five plastics, those number one plastics, those P E's, P E T's and stuff like that. However, I will see my knowledge more towards the state and what they're fully implementing. But again, I think it is leaning more towards your, your P E T's and those things like that. P L A plastic is technically falls under number five, which is bioplastic. So yeah, it, it, it's under the number. When you look at the recycling on the container, I think it's number five or number seven, seven. Thank you. Appreciate that. But yeah, so, but it does fall under the recycling number. So it, it does get a little bit confusing with that.
I have one, a piece of, just something to go back, go back over. When you reported on the targets in the climate action plan, one item was that by twenty twenty-three, regular commercial compost services are established and consistently used. Is that, are we up to, up to that standard or moving somewhere dealing with the commercial compost services?
I would say that they are regularly, commercial composters are, are available. So with the state, when they implemented the organic management law and when I attempted the Northwest Regional Summit of what their goal was, when they say organic management, they mean solely food waste, maybe not those, those fiber-based containers, because those are maybe not following under that. But they do emphasize food waste and where that goes and those scraps and everything. And our current waste holler does allow anyone on Bainbridge Island to start using that service. So I would say that there are commercial composting services available. I don't know to what extent of how extensive it is for all businesses on Bainbridge Island.
Okay. While you're still there, Mayor Matthews has a hand up.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to say thanks for the presentation, Adam. It's really, really good. And it's just blows, makes me think of all the things you do. They go beyond analyst or what I think is an analyst. So just had to say that. And then I had a question for, um, I know we have this on our agenda in a few weeks. And I was wondering what is the difference in that conversation and if it's that we would be having or if it's something that we covered this evening?
City Manager.
It will be, I think for the most part, a repeat of this conversation. That, that's how I, I don't necessarily want to envision it that way, but the information that we're presenting is now is the information that we will come back to. You'll get to hear Adam again. We'll have some more slides and we'll talk about where our backyard organic items go.
Councilmember Hytopolis.
So given the fact that it's, that is producer responsibility is going to be probably about recycling. Could we have Adam make sure it doesn't reference composting and then not discuss it if it's not about composting? Because we actually don't allow recyclable plastics for food waste. So why, I don't know why we're, why we would talk about it. So it sounds like, it sounds like Adam was being very careful to be one hundred percent sure that that legislation has nothing to do with compostable food waste, but could probably figure that out. We wouldn't have to have the conversation.
Yeah. And so yes, we can, we can make sure we're drawing distinction between backyard compostable products and food waste and other types of recycling.
Mayor Matthews again. Oh, it's just, just a.
Sorry about that. I didn't, didn't lower my hand.
Well, perhaps we've, we've covered all the bases that handled it all. Move on to the next, the third item on the agenda. Presenting highlights of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five permit re, permit fee rate study. Highlights, that sounds like fun and games. The, yes.
Yes. So we want to surface for the council, a proposal that we will be bringing forward to you. Part of that process is beginning this evening for revised rates for the planning and building functions. The council has established policy. I highly endorse the policy. Is that you will review your planning and building rates at a minimum of every three years. That's to prevent the fees becoming stagnant. That has been accomplished. We want to bring you the results and we will be making recommendations for implementation. But we want to use the opportunity this evening to introduce the topic to you.
Planning Director Charnas.
Good evening. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. Good evening, City Council, Patty Charnas, Planning and Community Development. And it is our pleasure to be presenting to you highlights from our most recent permit rate fee rate study, which was started last fall and concluded roughly in the late spring and involved our building official, our admin supervisor and our finance department. So today we will be doing a little background for you, giving you an executive summary of the highlights, going a little more into the project process, sharing with you key findings and having some suggestions for implementation. As you recall from my presentation on permit process improvements, I described two basic permit types. Planning permits that deal with the land and the environment and take longer to review. And we receive much fewer of them. And building permits with dealless structures on the land and we receive far more greater number of building permits. For the purposes of tonight's discussion on permit fee rates, I'm also including the Public Works Development Engineering Permits. They cooperatively work with my department on these types of permits. They too require more in-depth analysis, engineering, obviously. So we're bundling the Planning and Development Engineering Permits as one group and the Building Permits as another group. You'll see why. Clearly, starting with the end in mind, some of the highlights from the, this permit fee rate study is that the last time our permit fee rates were reviewed was the first time the city looked at permit fees in sixteen years. There was some significant adjustments that occurred. We've been monitoring those adjustments as well as our other costs and expenses and find that our permit fees still are not achieving the level of cost for recovery and still requiring subsidies from our general fund. The study recommends that rather than all at once to increase permit fees over the next three years, thirty percent, twenty-five percent and seventeen percent respectively for building permits and thirty percent, ten percent and ten percent for Planning and Development Engineering Permits for the next three years. Consistent with our neighboring jurisdictions is the proposal for a new application and technology fee. I'd like to get into that in a little bit. So there are adopted policies in our budget and financial paperwork that's require the city to review permit fees every three years. This is so that we don't do a sixteen-year review again. But that same adopted policy state that permit fees are to be set to achieve a hundred percent or full cost recovery. This is everything that deals with the receipt, processing and issuance of permits. On a side note, I think as I've described in the past, that over eighty-five percent of all activity in the Department of Planning and Community Development has to do with helping our permit customers, answering their questions, helping them through the process and giving them assistance before, during and after permitting. Importantly, members of our Planning Division and our Administration Division also deal with non-permit related activities in addition to permit-related activities. They help us with rulemaking, ordinance development, assistance to our advisory boards and commissions and with code compliance. Those are general fund-funded activities. So we worked with F C S, which is the same entity that assisted the city in its first review. Because they knew the city, their methodology was one we wanted to use in this review. And that they were using that same methodology and also helped us really dig down into what our costs and expenses and processing times were. The city manages permitting, permitting fees as an enterprise fund, which means it is supposed to be capture, recapturing all of its costs and expenses. That fund is managed by our, our finance division is the Building and Development Services or B D S Fund. And over time, you'll see that the B D S Fund has required general fund transfers now upward of two million dollars over the recent years. So clearly, we are not finding, we're not achieving a hundred percent cost recovery. And key drivers that the study revealed are salaries. The salaries we have are competitive and keep our staff strong and able to be retained. Also, insurance costs have gone significantly higher as well as some of the other professionals and legal services that are associated with permitting. Building permits again constitute far and away the more, the highest level of volume. Sixty-four percent of all permits processed by the department. Planning and Development Engineering Permits bring up the rear and still are a significant workload. One of the things that I hoped to impress you on in the last permit process improvement presentation is that this permit program relies upon technology. It relies upon a technology that we're able to look at, review, update, configure and program so that it's operating as its highest and best, most efficient, efficient way for not only staff but also for our customers. We have not been capturing those costs like other jurisdictions do. And finally, the study revealed that we spend a great deal amount of un-revenue time with our customers and that that is not being captured. And that's why we're proposing a modest application and technology fee. All Kitsap jurisdictions are. So when we look at the proposed implementation of spreading the increases out over the next three years, the building permits will achieve at or close to a hundred percent at the end of the three-year period. The Planning and Development Engineering Permits, better than they have been operating at now at thirty-five percent, but at about fifty, fifty-one percent, which is consistent with the other jurisdictions that I've worked at. Planning and Development Engineering cannot be set at a, a, a rate that would achieve a hundred percent cost recovery simply because of the time and the complexity related to them. If we are able to institute an application and technology fee, a modest ninety-five dollars per application, we can manage that revenue and the costs related to it. So that while it's not a great amount, it, it helps cover the costs of our technology coverage and our customer services before permit fees are applied for. Here are some examples of the permit fee adjustments. Building permits are based on valuation. So a cost to produce a single-family residential home at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars currently costs about six thousand, six hundred dollars. And with our proposed updates in twenty twenty-six would be about eight thousand, six hundred dollars, constituting a thirty percent increase. Interestingly enough, the review really dove down into how much time we're spending on permits whose fees were, were set at the end of the last study. We are now not taking as long for our conditional use permits. That's the most complex permit we have, especially the major conditional use permits. We are doing them more effectively and more efficiently. So we're proposing a reduction of sixty-three percent for our major conditional use permits. We only get very few of those. So the effect on revenue is not significant. However, an example of our planning permits, namely the critical area permits are, are proposed at those rates at thirty percent. I apologize for the illegibility of this slide, but let's look at a study that Kitsap County conducted on local jurisdictions' average cost of permitting a single-family residence, two thousand square feet, three, three-bedroom, three-bath. And currently, the city of Bainbridge Island is about on or about just before the lower third of the jurisdictions, starting with King County at the far left and going all the way to the far right at Thurston County. All of the Kitsap County jurisdictions are included for, in this comparison. With the thirty-three percent increase. With the 30% increase, Bainbridge Island will be more in align with the cities of Port Orchard and the city of Polespo. And all of these jurisdictions, both within the county and outside the county, review their permit fees. So we expect that the city manager may ask us to return at some time in the near future with a resolution and updated fee schedule for your consideration. However, it's been my pleasure to share the highlights of this permit fee study. It was hard. It was a lot of data, and it took a lot of time. And I want to thank the finance department for their direct help in putting together this presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. Are there questions or comments on this? Councilmember Hytopolis, and then Councilmember Dees.
Well, I just have a hard time understanding how we're this close out from, soon out from the last study that was supposed to be, this was supposed to be a momentous occasion for resetting our fees, and it feels like we somehow really missed the mark with that, and now we're going to be announcing these, you know, rolling, additionally, rolling increases over the next three years. And so, you know, I take this very seriously. On the one hand, I have always wanted development to pay its way on Bainbridge Island. On the other hand, we're in a time when prices are increasing and things are frightening for people, and we need to be as credible as possible. So I just, I don't know the answer. I can't do such studies on my own, but I don't understand how we had this momentous big increase in 2023, and now in 2025, we're saying we're that far behind. That concerns me, and doesn't make it easy sell for me to the community.
Councilmember Dees.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Patty. I'm just a quick question. We'll be talking about the, I think, next meeting about the ADU program that the Bainbridge participated with the other jurisdictions in Kitsap County to have sort of a pre-approved ADUs. But the, I don't expect an answer right here, but I am curious is to, once we can implement that of the price increases, what savings can people who use those pre-approved ADUs expect? If they don't, I'm sure there'll be some costs, because it's not like, you know, nothing happens. But I'm curious, because obviously, we're trying to find a way to make housing affordable, and these pre-approved ADUs is one way hopefully can achieve that. So from standpoint one of how quickly can this happen, are they pre-approved, and two, what is the saving? So maybe in the future, think about what kind of answer you could provide for that. Thank you.
Are there other questions? You'd think I'd have a bunch of questions. It's, I understand the goal, and it's surprising that there is so, such a discrepancy between the past fees and the costs that they are supposed to be balanced with. They, this is, it's staff time. Is that basically it? Staff time that you're upsetting with?
Yeah, through the chair, that's a variation of the council member Hytopolis coming. And maybe Mr. Pitts would be appropriate to answer that if he could very quickly. And that is, you know, we had a long gap, and then we had a rate study to increase the fees, and then we're coming back three years later and still increasing fees. And perhaps I can talk about that. Let me just talk in general, too, that was made, it was that there are really two parts of this. There's the planning part and the building part.
Yeah, yeah.
The building part is more straightforward. That is plan checking and inspections. And there's an expectation that that should be self-supporting.
Yes.
Because the planning piece, as we say, if we can get to 50%, the other 50% is long-range planning, which really doesn't have source recovery. But I do think that the finance director probably be the most appropriate to just provide, you know, why did we have an increase, and why are we back here three years later with something other than just a CPI increase?
Good evening, Councilman Dwayne Pitts, Finance Director. Nice to see everybody again. Yeah, so let's first start with the revenue piece. So the overall permit revenue is largely consistent with the volume of permits that we do, and with permits, building permits being roughly 2/3 of our entire revenue base, it stands to reason that that fluctuates quite a bit with the activity in the construction community and what's going on as far as that goes. So, for example, in 2017, our revenue was actually 1.7 million, and then during COVID, it dropped all the way below $1 million, and now it's climbed back up to about 1.6. And as far as the composition of that, looking at what FCS has provided us, the cost recovery on planning actually went up at the end of the last study, the last full year when they completed their study in 2019. It was 23% recovery on planning, and it increased to 35% at the end of the last study. So there was some improve at the end of 2024, excuse me. So there was some improvement there, but building went the other direction. It went from 64% recovery down to 56%. So Patty had highlighted some of the changes and some of the cost increases, the biggest being, so 80% of the fund's costs are labor. The other 20% consists of other things, mostly overhead, and the biggest two increases there were insurance as well as litigation, sorry, legal, excuse me, legal costs and professional service costs. So I can't explain why, you know, and the predictions that we have for the next three years are consistent with what we did in 2024. So we took, we took a look at the last few years and used the volume to project out for the next three years, using the volume of the last three years.
Mayor Matthews, you had your hand up. Would you like?
Oh, thanks, Deputy Mayor. I had my hand up just thinking about the real-world effects of the decisions we make and our policies. My parents are currently going through the permitting process with the city right now, and yeah. But I decided I probably shouldn't say anymore. I think I'm a cranky pants because I have a fever tonight, so I was going to leave it at that. I won't bring it up. Sorry.
I've been, I've been thinking about the things I hear about the length of time it takes to get through the permitting process, not the building permits, but long before that. And I do, I see real efforts being made and probably significant improvement in watching the clock and meeting the requirements of our shot clock. It's, if people, for no reason, for no good reason of their own, if applicants are stuck waiting for a response to a question or a problem to be solved, if there's more and more time that's spent without reason, adding to the cost of permits is rubbing salt in the wounds. It doesn't seem right. But I do, I understand the desire to bring these things together, and I'm expecting that to, you know, come together effectively. That's our goal, to make it balance. There are cynics in the community who say the planning department wants development to happen because it pays their salaries, and that's, of course, a gross oversimplification. And we want to get away from that. But I do understand the economics of this process, and we have to watch it. So we'll see more about this, the details coming forward. Thanks. And Councilmember Marawaki, and then Councilmember Hytopolis in addition.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's a philosophical question about how we pay for all these things, and I'm one of fiscal responsibilities. So when we first came into this years ago, we had this fee increase, and because it hadn't been done for many years, a decade or more, now is the time to try to correct that, and that's the understanding I had back then. The intellectual gap I have is if that was the catch-up after 12 years or whatever it was, why couldn't have this been anticipated? Why, down the road, you say, well, we're only capturing 40%, so what do we get to 100? So why didn't we consider the rates at that time? It would have been a little Band-Aid pulling off, but we've been projecting. See, a lot of, and I think development should pay for itself, but a lot of these aren't developers. These are individuals doing home remodelings and things like that. But it should pay their way, and it should be a revenue-neutral organization in terms of the professional staff. What I'm, the part I'm missing is why couldn't we see this gap in the future? I think it would have been predictable, and the one thing that our business community wants, and we're seeing it at the national level, international level, is lack of predictability. You know, they, you make financial decisions on what's going to happen, and developers, the one I know, they want to follow the rules, but just tell us what the rules are, and we can plan for them and know what those costs are going to be. I think that's just a fair thing, and I think homeowners have that right, too. And so that's where I'm having a disconnect on this discussion tonight, because I thought we were getting caught up years ago, and now it's another hit, and it's a multi-hit. It's in the order of 50% on some of these over five or three or four years. So I'm just trying to follow along with this logic, and a lot of it's not being logical, at least in my little brain. And, you know, you want to talk about stereotypes. I'm an Asian who's crappy at math, so I'm trying to keep up with all you guys here. So that's my concern here, and I just need to have that addressed.
Councilmember Hytopolis.
Well, what Councilmember Marawaki is saying is what I was saying a moment ago, and after hearing some more, I'm not feeling any better about it, because I'm hearing that the primary driver is labor, which is exactly right. Whoever just said that's a classic accusation of us, that it's driven by labor. So that's, that's not, that definitely does not, further does not help sell this to the community, that we had a professional rate study done and to catch up, and a few years later, less than three years at this point, we are this far below, so we entirely missed the mark of the goal of covering our fees, and labor is 80% of the cause. So that's concerning. Another question I just have is, I'm not seeing any sign of what entity did this, did this study? I thought we've in the past used a professional organization. I just want to know, who did the update?
It was an outside firm, same firm that did the previous study.
Councilmember Dees.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And yeah, thank you for this presentation, this information. Yeah, I think I concur. It would be nice for us to be able to understand. It just seemed like we just did this rate increase just recently, and now another one's here. So, but I would mention to colleagues and the public that aren't we seeing rate prices increasing everywhere, everywhere? You go to the grocery store, you buy property, you buy, you do anything, and the prices are going up. So try not to look at this in isolation, is my point. This is the trend we are seeing everywhere. Prices are going up. No one likes it. So there is that. There's what we are seeing. And second, though, it is, it is a fair question that, why, it just seems like we just did this. So is it because we weren't anticipating the increase in inflation, perhaps? I mean, who was? So I just wanted to ask those, and thank you for the presentation.
Deputy Mayor, just want to clarify.
Yes.
I have no good explanation for you why in three years we're making this big jump. I would, in terms of delegated, put this together. But I do want to talk a little bit about what comprises these costs. In both sides, whether it be planning or building, it is labor, but it isn't because there's been a big increase in labor costs. That's just what comprises this service, is planners to review the applications, planners to go through the applications, planners to issue the applications. The dilemma that we're all in is how much should we that do not have a pending application in front of the city subsidize someone that does? The difference between a fee and a tax is a tax is a general charge imposed upon us with no direct return of benefit. A fee in this case is a direct return of benefit to the person that's receiving that benefit. The philosophy we're trying to exchange here is that someone with a building permit is getting a benefit. No one else really, other than general public health and safety, are paying for that. The question that you have is how much other residents of Bainbridge Island subsidize those people that are receiving a specific benefit? And that's just, and that is the dilemma that you have. You're in a spot here with this, you don't have to raise these fees, but you will have to contribute more general fund money to these fees. So that is dilemma that you have. I will say that we have worked hard to suppress costs. All of you have heard me say that the planning department has asked for more staff. My position is the planning department does not need more staff. That would be an additional cost. We have tried to make, and I think we have made, progress in expediting permit fees. Same, in terms of the hierarchy of issues, not as important as water and wastewater, but this is one that we want to address with you, and I would like to come back to you with a more fuller explanation. I'd put this on the staff here to work with me, come back with a more fuller explanation of why the gap after three years, when it maybe should have been more along CPI indexing, and was that because it was just so aggressive three years ago that it wasn't palatable to raise rates any higher, and we still have the shadow of those rates three years ago that we're dealing with now? I don't know if that's the explanation, but I'd like to come back to you with that.
Councilmember Phil Troy-Johns.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something to that. I think also, not only why it happened, but how do we prevent it? So say three more years, you know, we do the next study. How do we stop it from jumping up an enormous amount? How can we pre-plan for that?
Well, again, and I think we could, since we're at a study session, one of the other things that we'd need to show to you, and I would expect, is the proportionate percentage of planning development fees to over a cost of construction. My hypothesis right now is that the proportionate cost is remaining pretty steady. As general cost of construction increase, the costs related to what planning and building costs are, aren't any necessary, as a percentage, any higher than they were before. But we want to validate that before we offer that to you, but that would be the hypothesis that I would want to suggest now.
Well, I think it's time to move to committee reports from the activities of council members recent days. Councilmember Marawaki, first.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Last week, a meeting with the liaison to the Bainbridge Island Senior Center, Community Center, and I just got to say, this group is putting together a really thoughtful and laid-out strategic plan on communications and strategy, because they are very committed to making this new senior center. It's a, I'm just impressed by their work. I let them have the whole meeting, because I don't even want to talk, finish your work there. The Public Arts Committee had a meeting here. Deputy City Manager Ellen had it held in the, what's it called now? It used to be the map room.
Engineering.
Engineering room, yeah. And the reason, the reason why I think it was a good idea for her to be there, because some of the art and interpretive materials have been removed from the big map that's on the wall, and so she wanted to bring in the Public Art Committee and say, well, what are your thoughts? And I thought it was a really, it was a very tangible, literally physical outreach to our community, so I got to give her some, some real plaudits on that. And at Kitsap Transit, they had two fantastic things going on. They're moving forward to have a, their own fast ferry terminal in Seattle.
Yeah.
They're considering two piers just south of the current ferry dock, and then one a little bit north. And the reason why this is so critical is that Kitsap Transit has been a very effective and profitable, as
as, as transit goes, but they can have a reliable schedule because it works with King County's pier and they get priority. So even though they're on schedule and they're ready, the King County boat hasn't left yet or the water taxi, so they're idling there. And so their on-time schedule gets really screwed up. This is going to be a really good investment. And then there was a study done on, on that and that, that's going to be a public hearing. You can weigh in on those positions. And then just recently there was the, it was called the intra-county passenger ferry service study. And I think some of you entered that. They had 1,900 responses. An interesting thing was they had a whole bunch calling for the Silverdale deal. It was a bot. Somebody was sending in more than 600 votes from the same IP address. Yeah, kind of talk about, talk about rigged elections, huh? And so here's, here's some numbers out of those 900 responses. Bainbridge, Bainbridge Bremerton was by far the most popular one of all the different choices. 975 out of the 1,900 responses said this would be a priority route. The second was Bremerton-Silverdale at 280 and then Bremerton-Manchester at 130. Bremerton had 40% responses. Bainbridge Island had 18%, Port Orchard 21 and Silverdale and Palsmo 5% each, which makes sense because they're far away from ferries. There were write-ins though, and Bremerton-Palsmo got 200 write-ins, which was higher than some of the routes that were being considered. So this is really an interesting thing. And so now this is going forward to the real hard part. Now that we have a preference, they have a preference of what now, how much is it going to cost? How it's going to, how, how, how fast are they going to be? What's the projected ridership? It's one thing to draw a line in the water. It's another thing to actually deliver the service. And it's a, it's a really well-functioning agency. Thanks.
Call for, call for Mayor from Joe Dietz and then Mayor Matthews. And finally, Councilmember Schneider.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Councilmember Marawaki, thank you for that update on Kitsap Transit. That is a great organization and wonderful. Yeah, if they can get that birth over on the Seattle side, that would be enormously helpful. And quite exciting to hear the possibility of some in, what intra-county ferry service. For myself, just quickly, I'll start off. There's no climate change advisory committee meeting tomorrow. So committee report, there is no committee meeting. So that just leave it at that. Then quickly, just briefly mentioned the Rotary Auction. You know, that's not directly tied to the city, but it's a major event on the, on the island. I'm part of the Medical Reserve Corps. I volunteer in the first aid capacity. And I, the day of the event, we just had a few scrapes, people falling down, some people feeling dizzy, nothing too major. But what I wanted to bring up, which I found was interesting, I hadn't heard this before, but there were more injuries reported of people, workers preparing for the event in the days leading up to the auction, you know, falling, breaking bones before the event, the days before the event than the event itself. So that, that was, I don't know why that was, but maybe, you know, there's a lot of activity, getting it set up, but you know, things happen. So tomorrow I'm, I'm going to be participating, representing Bainbridge Island on, I would say, an extremely fascinating event. It's a South Central Petruson Climate Resilient Communities Accelerator. It's going to be focusing on two major climate hazards impacting our region, extreme heat and wildfire smoke. And this is looking at the, the, the risk and path to resilience and action strategies. So I'm quite excited. This is going to be all day tomorrow in Seattle at the Public Library. I will report out on this event after it has occurred. So thank you.
Mayor Matthews?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I had, so last week we had, I, I'm wondering what that room is named again. Not map room, but we had two really great meetings in the map room. Both were with Lehigh. The first one, we had a chance to meet with our representative Nance and one of the folks from Lehigh. It was very, very good meeting and encouraged me even more about our partners in this project. And then the next was our STEP group, which is our Pulsbo, Kitsap and Bainbridge housing group that meets, talking about recovery housing and other types of housing. And Lehigh came and gave us a presentation on safe parking as well as a few other things that really excited, I think, both Councilmember Dietz who was there and I. So we're going to be bringing forward to you. Or I think we have to, our next step is to talk about whether or not we're interested in entering an inter-local agreement with Pulsbo and the group on this issue. So we will have to, we'll discuss it with council and see where we land. But I'm really, really excited about some of the prospects of work to be done. There are lots of folks sleeping in their cars who could be sleeping in a lot safer conditions. And we talked about, a lot about laundry too. So it was a good meeting. And then, oh, I don't know what else I did this week. And then I, oh, we had our React meeting yesterday and they will be, they sent a communication to us that'll be on our next agenda as we are discussing citizen advisory groups and whether or not folks who don't live on Bainbridge Island can participate. And that's all I have.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, last Thursday was a busy day. I think all of my report is focusing on that one day. So I'm going to actually jump more towards the end. So the, I participated for the first time in the Bainbridge Island Ferry Advisory Committee. And there was a fair amount of summary of things that, you know, I think a lot of us were already aware of, like the, the, the contracts being given to the Florida company that was going to, is going to build them. But exciting news is the soft launch of the Winachi here on Bainbridge. So I think I was asking the, I think about 20% in, in the, in the mode where they don't get charged up at each end, in the hybrid mode only, there is about a 20% savings in carbon. But once we get the charging, the electrical charging of the, of the big batteries, it'll be a 90% benefit. So then earlier in the day, oh, and I didn't stay till the end of that meeting because I wanted to jump off and, and watch the sort of the, the part that I was interested in at the planning commission. So, but earlier in the day, I went to the Transportation Policy Board meeting in person. And what I wanted to share, I don't know whether this group is going to be interested in trying to offer guidance at all, but we're at the stage, as I think I've mentioned before, where there's, we're working on the next transportation plan, the regional transportation plan, RTP. And we're at the point where a lot of data has been collected about the needs and plans and data has been collected about how much all that's going to cost. And now we're looking at the gap. So there's 778 billion dollar gap, which equates to a 21% gap in the, in the difference between what's available from current, current law revenue versus what it would, what it will cost us. And there, so we were given a lot of options for how we could start to balance the books a little bit. So things like, you know, we could delete the projects that are scheduled to start later than 2040. Or we could not look at the projects that are, have a priority consistency grade of 50% or lower. But there are caveats to why you might not want to do that. I think the biggest thing that I have a question about now is there's 92 billion in what's called programmatic business or, or programmatic costs. And the best I can get, although it was explained a couple of times, these are non-line, non-line item projects. They are more local. So in other words, they are not really based on the funding that comes from the federal government through PSRC. So I'm not really sure how, you know, all of that, I mean, it is, I think it's great that it's all incorporated into the regional transportation plan. But, you know, would our Eagle Harbor improvements and whatnot be considered? Well, actually some of that is PSRC. But, but Madison Avenue, for instance, you know, a lot of that was local, local funding. And, and so if we're starting to say, well, would we be willing to cut programmatic funds? How does that even? How is that even? How does that make sense from a local jurisdiction's point of view? So if there is enough interest here, you know, we could probably ask PSRC to come virtually to one of our meetings. There's another resource who I met there while we were having lunch. She seemed delightful, was not, she was a, I don't know whether she was a voting member or not, but she's been in the transportation planning for decades and now is no longer with the jurisdiction. So she might be able to come and explain things to us that, in a, in a way that we could hear. Anyway, that's what I will, I'll stop at for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Marawaki, did you have another?
Just a quick follow-up. Thanks, Councilmember Dietz. It was fun to run into you at the auction. Came by, I, I was there from 5th of July until Saturday and it was a lot of great work. To answer your question, it, it does seem surprising, but when you think about it, not really. During the buildup, there's a lot of different things, heavy furniture, building materials. Gosh, the stereo apartments, some of those old school amps are like 45 pounds. And so people are moving and running around and things happen. Fortunately, nothing really serious, but yeah, yeah, well, that's the thing. But it is, you know, it happens and because we're volunteers doing things. And they, hopefully we have it all set up and so therefore you just sell the junk. Not junk, want new treasures for people. And we'll have a picnic this Sunday and hopefully we'll break last year's $680,000 record.
Mayor Matthews, you have, no, no, it's okay. Well, I have two things to mention. The planning commission meeting Thursday of last week moved into the process of reviewing goals and policy statements that will be components gathered together as part of the Winslow Subarea Plan. That process involved revising some existing goals and policies and then considering those that are new and in need of, in some cases, discussion and, and some tweaking of the language. It's a, it's a painstaking process as all of the work of the planning commission has been. But it's moving in, moving forward through a necessary series of decisions. And then there will be recommendations worked into the draft that will come to us in due time. The other thing, and this is more a matter of joy and pride, I think. Yesterday's Race Equity Advisory Committee meeting included the welcoming of a new member of the Race Equity Advisory Committee. A recent graduate of Bainbridge High School, Dashiel Tibbles, who will be studying at Seattle University in the coming academic year. But he was still, still living on Bainbridge, family here and very happy to be joining the group. And there was other work related to just planning, looking forward, choosing officers and deciding who would be responsible for, for secretary. And also talking about the small task forces that are doing ongoing work with Mr. Tibbles expressing an interest in affordable housing with other members of the Race Equity Advisory Committee. So that was a very enjoyable meeting that the mayor and I both participated in. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you. I just had one quick little update. So the Petruson Regional Council Transportation Policy Board is doing a number of upcoming community events. And they will be at the Bainbridge Island Farmers Market on August 9th.
I believe it's time to adjourn this meeting.